Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Washington City Council for August 13th, 2018. Please rise from the floor.
I plan to read this discussion live in the United States of America. This is Sam's Foundation Underground Municipal for the reading of this call.
Thank you. What do we call it?
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shuldrough?
Here.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
President.
Sayam?
Harris?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting minutes, executive meeting minutes, from July 23rd? Hearing none, Councilman Shuldrough moves to approve the minutes, second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. I'd like to make a motion, we amend the agenda for a resolution. On Resolution... 1005, second by Ms. Pagano.
Roll call. You don't need a roll call for that.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
I don't think you told them you were moving it to the beginning. I don't think they told, you told them that you were moving it to the beginning.
Ten no's.
Okay. Go ahead.
Clerk? So we're doing, the new business is the Resolution Number 1005.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mayor Robert G. Lowry Sr. for his 50 years of service to the city of Florissant and surrounding communities.
Can you do the second?
Councilman Caputa, myself, moves for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All opposed? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mayor Robert G. Lowry Sr. for his 50 years of service to the city of Florissant and surrounding communities.
Councilman Sayam moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mayor Robert G. Lowry Sr. for the, for his 50 years of service to the city of Florissant and surrounding communities.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing, seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Resolution Number 1005 passes.
I ask Councilmember Shuldrough to join me. He was very, very good friends with, as was I, with Bob Lowry, and loved the Lowry family. We're very honored to have with us members of his family here tonight to receive this resolution, including his wife Carol, and his son Tim, and his wife Laurie, and Kathy. And we were so lucky, for 50 years, to have the services of Bob Lowry. And I'm here, I'm gonna surprise Carol, although I did mention to her at the funeral, but, and I talked to her with him, we're going to dedicate a plaque in the sidewalk, in a walk-through history, in September, the same night we have the Wednesday Night Out for Handels, we're gonna have a ceremony right here in front of City Hall, right at the end of the sidewalk, we're gonna put a plaque in honor of Robert Lowry Sr. and we just appreciate you guys sharing them with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carol, I'd just like to thank you for giving Bob to us for 50 years. It was 50 years of great service, as a policeman, as a chief of police, and the mayor, and I feel very honored and fortunate to have served with him.
In all honesty, you know, actually, the last couple of weeks spent pretty tough on the family, needless to say, but the one thing that really has got us through is all the wonderful people in the city of Florissant, the mayor of the city council, and really all of our friends, our family, and you know, when you pass away and you're 79-years-old, you generally don't have a two-and-a-half-hour wait at your wake, just to pass by the casket, but it, obviously, he touched a lot of people in a positive way, and so many people showed up, and just to hear the stories and the different things that people had to say about my father, I can tell you, it was very humbling to me, and I know my mom the same way, so we just really appreciate everything that everybody's done in the community, don't hurt my father, and I can tell you that he definitely did it his way, as we always say, but I can tell you that the, the people that were there and everything, I think that that's really what he would've appreciated, so we appreciate everything that everybody's done for, recognizing my father, and certainly for my family. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for their support. Everything's been great, especially the police department, the fire department, and the mayor, and the council, and just thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing about Bob Lowry. When I was in the hospital, I got injured, Bob was one of the first people that, that visited me, and we had some conversations along with Mayor Schneider and several others, and then they talked to me about running for the seat that I'm sitting in. And I'll never forget, Bob made me promise, he said, he made me promise that I would keep the city safe, the only, he said, "The only thing I'm gonna ever ask you is keep this city safe." And in the years afterwards, when I saw Bob, he always asked me the very same question, "Are you keeping the city safe?" It is so important for our citizens, he really truly cared about the individual residents that live in this city. The last time I saw Bob was, Mayor Lowry was at the kickoff for Tim Lowry, and he asked me the same thing, he said, "Joe, are you keeping the city safe? Please keep the city safe." And so that's something I always take home with me about Mayor Lowry, he was an awesome guy for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Yes, Bob was a special man. Lived in, lived in Ward 4, in fact, the whole family lived, lived right around the corner from, from my house, used to stop by, talk to Bob a lot. It was, he was a wealth of knowledge, very good man to sit down and talk to, just the stories that he had, he, you could sit there forever listening to the stories from Bob that Bob had. And it's, it's truly, truly, we're gonna miss him truly, and it's a sad day that, that he, he will be missed. Thank you. Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I would like to concur with everyone else. I know that my father and Bob were good friends, so I, I sort of go way back and with stories that I could tell. Bob's passion for this city was remarkable. You walk around and you can see the things that he touched, and, and that of my father, and it's very humbling, so I thank you, your family, because I know the sacrifice that my mom gave for my dad in public service, and the sacrifice that you made and your kids made is just remarkable, and so I am honored just to know them, so I thank you.
Mr. Shuldrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I would first like to apologize to you, because I might have some trouble getting through what I, through what I want to say, so please grant me some patience. Thank you. For a person who spent the majority of his working career as a print journalist, I somehow find it very difficult to find the words to express my feelings about the passing of our former policeman, police chief, mayor, and regional leader, Robert G. Lowry Sr. I recall the first time I met Bob Lowry in 1997. I was a young homeowner with a growing family, and we were experiencing problems on our street with a neighbor. It became very evident, when the problem jumped to another level, that Bob Lowry personally got involved with our situation. In a matter of days, Florissant law enforcement officials and inspectors quickly solved our neighborhood problem. That home has since been occupied by some of our best neighbors. Before this encounter, I didn't know Bob Lowry. My wife and I were just beginning our life together, and we felt fortunate to live in a community where we felt safe, and where we could raise our four children. As my children started to grow older, I decided to pursue a career in public service by serving on this council. I was fortunate enough to be elected in 2005, and it is a decision I have never looked back on, and I owe quite a bit of gratitude and thanks to Bob Lowry. I can recall on a few fingers the times Bob and I disagreed on an issue. The procedure usually started with a phone call, sometimes very late in the evening. On those rare occasions when we disagreed, the voice on the other end of the phone ended the conversation with six simple words, "And you will have an opponent." But the phone would always ring five minutes later, and the voice would say, "Keith, please come up to my office, we can work this out, please, you're a personal friend of mine." And on those rare occasions where we did disagree, we worked together for the common good of the city, he loved and served for many years. Bob's three sons paid me a compliment recently when they say, "I do the best imitation of their father." Many have tried, I'm told, but they always come up short. In the future, I will find it very difficult to perform this, what used to be an easy task. There are many Bob Lowry stories that I was fortunate enough to be involved with. I had a hard time picking the perfect story, but I respectfully request your indulgence for a few minutes. One of our residents, Dick Kellet, was being honored at the Port Council Labor Dinner at the Cedars Hall at St. Raymond's, and there was a very large crowd. A well-known gossip columnist, my former colleague at the Post-Dispatch, Jerry Berger, was in the house. As Berger's customary issue, he walked to me, kissed me, hugged me, and right before the program was to get, to begin, and the floor was emptying, this gossip columnist approached Bob in the middle of the banquet hall, and proceeds to kiss Bob Lowry on the lips. And they embrace, and they talk for five minutes, and Bob Lowry walks slowly back to our table, sits down next to me, puts his napkin in his lap, and says, "I'll get you for that. It may take some time, but I will." I told him I had nothing to do with it, you've known Jerry longer than I have, Bob. Several months later, at a city function, Berger came up in the conversation at the Mayor Lowry was speaking to a wife of a councilman, and Jerry Berger's name came up in the conversation, and Bob looked at her and said, "Well, Rachel, don't you know, Keith and Jerry have been an item for over 20 years." She then picked up the phone, he then picked up the phone and called one of my best friends, and said, "Sean, I just got your buddy Keith." I know Bob would've been proud of his memorial service at Sacred Heart Church, with the police honor guard comprised of numerous law enforcement officials from the area. My senior, Mark Ulrich, Robert Lowry Jr., Robert Lowry III delivered moving, fitting It was difficult not to get emotional when former Ferguson Police Chief Tom Jackson, St. Danny boy. It was even more emotional to see the procession along St. Francis Street with people standing, paying tribute to Bob, and in my own ward on Graham Road, people with homemade signs saying thank you. I'd like to extend my sympathies to the entire Lowry family, Lowry family, for their loss. Please know that the city of Florissant, North County, and the metropolitan area is a better place because of Bob Lowry. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. It's a hard act to follow, as they say. As you all know, I had the pleasure of working with Chief Lowry when he was the chief of police. I also had the privilege of serving as his city attorney during his entire tenure when he was with the city. It was beyond a doubt an absolute privilege to have worked with him in both of those capacities. He, he always listened to me, he always talked with me, sometimes he would follow my advice, but particularly when it was in the best interests of the city. And we had some spirited conversations, but we always were honest, candid, and respectful to each other, and that sort of was typical of Bob Lowry, as you know. His legacy clearly is unparalleled. Like many, he reached out to me in my time of need, and he, that was another characteristic of Bob Lowry. When you needed someone, he was always there. We were blessed to have him. The only comfort that it truly had is that, I believe that Bob Lowry lives on through his family, of course, but also through the mayor, through the council, through the administration, through me, and the thousands and thousands of people that he touched. And I suggest that all of our task is to carry on the legacy of Bob Lowry. So when we think about something, think about the good things that he did, the things that we can do to make our community better, and like many said, we cannot thank you enough for sharing your husband, your father, father-in-law, with us. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hustle. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just keep it short, because I thought, I think we was very lucky, and I think, uh, Mr. Lowry was very lucky to, uh, be with us, to see his step, his son step up to the plate for us. I think he knows his son would do a good job as mayor, as long as, just like everybody else up on this council thinks that Tim will do a good job, and I know his heart comes first with the city, just like his father did, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mayor?
Yeah, I've known, Bob and I have known each other, we know each other for 42 years, kinda like the Schneider's and the Lowry's always supported one another. It was my honor, it's my honor to have composed the plaque, and I got the approval of the family, so it's gonna say, "Robert G. Lowry Sr., Police Chief, 1979 to 2001, Mayor, 2001 to 2011, 29 December 1938 to 30 July 2018. Bob Lowry began his 50-year career of service to Florissant residents as a patrolman in 1961, advancing to chief in 1979, and excelling in that position until elected mayor in 2001. He loved Carol and his family. He loved the people, and always placed the highest priority on their safety. Mayor Lowry delivered excellent municipal services, completed major renovations to recreation facilities, business development thrived, and surrounding subdivisions were annexed, increasing the size and prestige of Florissant."
Thank you, Mayor. Now I would like to have a moment of silence for former Mayor Lowry. Next item on the agenda, the executive citizens. This is time to speak at the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. This is not a question-and-answer period. If you would like to speak with a council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when a public hearing is announced. First person. Jean M. Hassi?
Hassi.
Cassie?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I read an article in the Independent News a few weeks ago, that the council was proposing to approve an additional $20,122 for a digital sign to be erected at the intersection of Chardonnay, Shackelford, Houdershell, at the entrance to Coke Park. And I read in the article that this sign had been in discussion for a long time, and I don't remember hearing anything about it. And it probably was, I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just saying it wasn't, I just didn't see it. I read the Independent News whenever I could find it, and I read the community news online every week. But I, okay, sorry, I have to have notes. I just, I do have questions, have, and you don't have to answer me, but I would like to know, because I want you to know that some of us have questions. Have contracts been signed on awaiting approval for the additional funds to make this happen? Were there public hearings to get input from the residents of Florissant, especially those who live around that intersection? Had the St. Louis County Highway Department consulted, to see what they thought the impact on traffic would be? There's a lot, there's a lot of distractions at that intersection, it's very busy, there are many of us who use it multiple times during the day, there have been some really serious accidents there. I know that the intersection was improved by St. Louis County, but I do have concerns about the distraction of placing a sign there, especially when there's QuickTrip, Jack-in-the-Box, the entrance to the park, and Shop 'n Save, and whatnot, and the shopping center right there, that's a lot of traffic. I posted, about four days ago, I posted a message on our neighborhood listserv, it's called Next Door, and I asked residents to give me some input on what they felt, and I heard from about 11 Florissant residents who live in the area, and two Hazelwood residents, and they all agreed that it really wasn't a good place to erect a sign like that, because of the distracts, because of the distractions it would cause to drivers and pedestrians alike. Let's see, okay. That intersection is extremely busy, there's a fairly steady flow of traffic through there. Many, many accidents, I guess, many, many distractions for drivers. It's my opinion, and that of some of my neighbors, that a digital sign would be an additional distraction, it just doesn't seem safe to put a sign there. If we were, if contracts were signed, then shouldn't, you know, should the contractor be held to the amount he, they bid on, and not need additional funding? And please, please don't fund this sign, please decide not to do that, because it's just, it's, Coke Park is absolutely beautiful, and I just think it would be a real distraction, and, and...
Thank you, Jean. Jean, can you, excuse me?
Yeah.
Can you give me your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, my name, I'm sorry, first time I've done this. My name is Jean Hassi, it's H-A-A-S-E. I live at 2503 Soundview Court in Florissant. We were annexed into the Florissant city a few years ago under Mayor Lowry, and we've been very happy since then, so, with, with the services and what all Florissant provides. Thank you.
Matt, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Matt Sanders, I live at 50 St. Benedict Lane, Florissant, 63033. I, I come to you as a community involvement leader. We are doing the St. Baldur's Night at McAllister's coming up in September, for, the kickoff for 2019 will be Thursday night, September 6th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at McAllister's on Lindbergh, and 10% of all sales will be going to the St. Baldur's Foundation, and also, there will be another event, same place, on Thursday, November 15, same time, same percentage, all of it's at McAllister's, and we're gonna have more of those events coming this year, and going in the next. Thank you for letting me come speak.
John Englemaier?
Council President, put up the call, motion, hide, speak before you speak, now you're the next.
Thank you, Ms. Englemaier. Next item on the, is communication, which there are none. Next item, public hearings, public hearing 1808026.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of the city of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 955 Route St. Francois, on Monday, August 13th, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition: To issue an amendment to B-5 ordinance number 8251 to HZ Props RE, LTD, DBA, Popeyes, to allow for the changes in the development plan in existing B-5 zoning districts, including site and material changes for the property located at 955 North Highway 67. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing, anyone with special needs should contact City Clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630, or TDA 839-5142.
The petitioner present.
My name is Eden Korlik, I'm the architect for this particular project. My office is located at 9700 Mackenzie Road, Suite 217, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123, and the company name's Korlik Architecture. I am here tonight presenting, representing H&amp;Z Props RE, LTD, out of Sugar Land, Texas, the owner of the Popeyes restaurant that's recently been built and open for business at, at 95, 955 North Highway 67. We are requesting an amendment to the original zoning ordinance, 8251, to amend a couple of items, namely, the main ones are the materials on the building, as well as some, some paving items that are, that have deviated from the original approved ordinance. The reason for deviation is, it's a bit of a long story, and I try to, I'll try to keep it short. It was kind of a mishap on everybody's part. There's been a series of events coming up with this, this project's been in design for almost over a year and a half, with me having the last three months of that year and a half as a design professional. It started with a company out of Texas, an architect-engineer team who supposedly finished the drawings to a 95%, and then just... the drawings to a 95%, and then just disappeared. That same company came here and went through this, through the hearing, through the, and got the ordinance approved, and then they were gone. At the same time, the leadership at Popeyes, who took care of this area, also switched. So they came on, hired me, I did the drawings, we turned them in to the city for review. They also missed that we didn't really follow the ordinance when it comes to the brick on the building, and approved, and in good faith. It was, it was a, it was a run against time, trying to get things done fast. We went ahead and got the permits approved, got the building built, and then at the onset, well, we got a conditional occupancy granted. Few, few weeks after that, we got a letter from the city saying that, you know, we're, we're not compliant with the ordinance. And then we looked at the eight or so items that were on there. Granted, majority of them were pretty minor, which we corrected right away. The two items really that we're here for is the color, not the color, but the use of APHIS versus the approved brick that was on the original ordinance. And there was a portion of a drive at the rear of the property, north of the property, that was supposed to be paved, but it's really not going anywhere. There was, there was an 18-inch curb to be built there. So during the construction, we made a move just to make that into a green space, as opposed to paving a drive that doesn't go anywhere. Like I said, the other additional items were minor landscaping issues that we were working with the staff with to fixing, and most of it has been fixed already. Another item was the 25-foot-tall sign. By mistake, our sign company installed a 15-foot-tall sign, but that's also getting reversed and changed, might actually have been changed already, so.
Mr. Hinke.
Yes, good evening.
Hello, Mr. Hinke.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
There's a couple, a couple things, and we'll get to the, the brick portion of it, if you will, or the materials portion. But I kinda wanna make it clear from the outset, that my understanding, well, it's not my understanding, the facts of the matter are, is there's a mutual, there was an agreement signed that's registered in St. Louis County for this easement, because I beg to differ on your terminology, saying that this didn't go anywhere. It actually goes to Mr. Cancilla's property to the north, which is the rear of this. So I don't, just, I wanna be very clear, very to the point here. My opinion is that must go in. There's not an option for that. That has to go in there, and I know there was a couple other arguments for it, but they really didn't hold any water. And it's a very simple fix, and I think the fact that it was on the original contract, the city is not gonna get into the position, I don't think, of Mr. Hassel to speak for this, I hope we do so, will not get into the, into the point that we are going to not provide an easement or an access that was already contractually obligated.
The, if I may, the access, the change to the access was brought on by MoDOT. And basically, we were told on the site how this traffic through the site should flow. And we were told by MoDOT that we need to, by the Department of Transportation, that we need to have a one-way traffic through the site. Now, having this...
On that note, on that note, let's hold up, because I understand that. But there's a couple things that, to me, that argument really holds no water, and I mean no disrespect. First of all, that curb cutout on Lindbergh was an existing cutout for the 1955 address. That was there before Popeyes. That's the old cutout for the dealership that was there, so it was not a new cutout. So MoDOT has no dog in this fight. There's already a cross-access between the Culvers Restaurant and to the Popeyes Restaurant that would kind of refute that whole argument. MoDOT has no dog in this fight, and I don't think it's true that MoDOT would have a say or any input into the traffic pattern in your parking lot. Having said that, I understand if you wanna have a circular motion to the pulling in and pulling out, my understanding is that's easily fixable, too, with the, with the open, the easement opening there, that cross-access agreement, with any cars coming this way would just be making a right and get into that thing. But I beg to differ on that MoDOT's, that this is at the direction of MoDOT or anyone else.
We did have signed communication from them that we presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the staff.
Was it signed by MoDOT?
Yes.
Or was it signed by your engineer of the interpretation of MoDOT?
No, it was, it was direct, it was a direct motion from MoDOT directing us to do this traffic this way. But also, keep in mind that the original documents called for an 18-inch curb at this cross-access agreement to Mr. Cancilla's lot. So this, this pavement would have been there. If we put this pavement there, we're still gonna erect an 18-inch-tall curb, so nobody's, there's gonna be no access to this lot, because that's what was approved in the ordinance.
Mr. Hassel, would you care to address this?
I'm not sure that I can fully address all the points. I'm not sure I can fully address all the points. I know that Mr. Lum is to be reaching out to MoDOT to try to get clarification, and I believe that Mr. Cancella's attorney, Kevin Williams, is here to address those points as well. And I would suggest that we look to Mr. Cancella's attorney to try to bring some clarity, at least as far as he is concerned, before this council takes any action, as well as finding out what MoDOT has to say about this.
Good, good. And the other item, in respect, not to switch subjects, but in respect to the brick, I've reached out to my structural engineer, and he's done some, some looking into what it would take to add brick to the building around, right now, and, and the items that he's, that he's presented to me, it's pretty much impossible to do it at this point. It would, it would mean tearing off everything off of the roof, off of the exterior walls, off of the interior walls, reinforcing, obviously doing a structural analysis, and reinforcing the entire structure to accept the load off the brick that's, you know, 24-foot-tall in the front and 21-foot-tall in the sides, that it's, it is just not doable, other than tearing down the restaurant and starting from scratch.
Yeah, Ed, when I, I have a question about the 18-inch curb.
Mm-hmm.
The 18-inch curb is not the height, actually, of the curb.
It's a barrier.
I mean, it usually, when we, I do, I'm a cement mason by trade, and we pour a lot of curb, and our curb is actually 18 inches, but the only thing it's gonna show is six inches of it.
Six inches or so.
Because the rest is all underground for your structural.
Exactly.
So that's probably what they were referring to as an 18-inch curb, correct?
Looking at the, looking at the approved civil drawings, they call out an 18-inch curb as pretty much a barrier. I mean, take it almost as a, as a baller, so to say, so that there's no, there's no vehicular traffic back there. The whole agreement doesn't make sense to me either. I mean, I wasn't part of the original agreement when it was, when it was signed, or nor would I even wanna be part of that agreement, but I'm just interpreting what the drawings said, and, and we had this concrete pour that went to this curb, and it stopped right there. So during the project, the project manager, who couldn't be here tonight, the director of construction for Popeyes, Tim Barley, talked to the general contractor and said, hey, why don't we just, you know, make that into landscape, landscape that area? Why have more extra pavement on there that we don't need to? Because it's, it's not gonna get anywhere. It's, it's a barrier to drive.
Well, when you, when you first came, had that agreement with the curb cut in the back or the cross-access, correct? You, you knew that going into it, correct?
I'm sorry, say it again?
The access in the back.
Mm-hmm.
The cross-access with, with Cancella.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? You, you knew that when you were going into the project from the beginning, correct?
I would assume that, that the ownership of Popeyes, I mean, they, I was not aware of any of that.
Because it, it seems to me that you guys just, well, we're not gonna do that, we're just gonna put a curb all the way through it and a retention pond and leave it at that and see if we can get away with it. I don't, I mean, I, it just seems to me that it was, you just went about it and did it anyway, you know, without going, going what you decide, what Popeyes decided on. I know you're just an architect, you have no say in what actually Popeyes done, but that's what it seems to me, that they just went ahead and put it in there anyway and said, we'll deal with it, thanks, you know, see what happens.
This issue, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hinke.
Yes, perhaps we could have Mr. Cancella's attorney come forward? Would that be possible? Good time for that?
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Cancella?
Yes, I, I make a motion, expend the rules to...
Public hearing, okay. You do?
My name's Kevin Williams, 120 South Central, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. I am the attorney for Cancilla Family Real Estate, which is the owner of the property to the rear and was the owner of the Popeyes parcel. I have with me here Tony, Tony Cancilla.
Good evening. My name is Tony Cancilla, and I'm the owner of the parcel behind the Popeyes restaurant. The address is, my office is 2175 North Highway 67, Florissant, Missouri.
Thank you for inviting me up at this time. I think some clarification is, is necessary here. I was involved from the very beginning, I was involved in the drafting of this, of this agreement. The purpose of the agreement was to allow continued access through what had been the prior access for the, for the, for the body shop in the rear. The agreement provides two things. It provides that at all times, vehicles are to be able to move to Lindbergh or from Lindbergh Boulevard, and it also specifically provided that nothing be built in this cross-tasked area, so as to permit this movement. So that's, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and put this up. So this agreement was entered into with the, with the Popeyes development team and their ownership. It was negotiated over a, over a period of about six to eight months. Eventually, the property was closed, and two years ago, that agreement was recorded in St. Louis County by the, by the Popeyes developer. So they were fully aware of it, they negotiated it with council, everything was arranged so as to permit the, to permit the access, and like I said, it was recorded. What we have here is the last page of the agreement, and you can see the book in the page at the top, that's the recording information. The last page, there's a lot of words in the agreement about the cross-access, but the last page, it was like, was a picture of the cross-access, and actually had a picture of a specific area, that was the access opening, was what it was called, that was never to be, never to be blocked. That was the agreement that was entered, that was entered into two years ago. If, it's a little awkward here to use this. I just, I put these together, I think everybody's been out there and kinda knows what we're talking about, but in case you didn't, it's just that very limited spot that we're talking about, that we're asking be constructed...
You can take that microphone if...
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just...
Flip the paper.
Oh. Aha, look at that. Oh my God, look at that. I guess I, I guess I could look up there.
Reading plans upside down.
So it's just the, interestingly enough, Google does not have a good photo of anything right now, so I went on about 10 websites, and I found a really bad aerial of Popeyes, and that's what we've got on the left-hand side. Put it parallel to, to the last page of the agreement, and you can see that what we're talking about is where those arrows were at the top. That's just a little area that, that's now been paved over, when we're looking for that pavement to be built. On this second page, I wanted to, it's, this is just, again, a visual of the area that we're talking about, and this is also, what's at the bottom is actually a picture of sort of a washout that's occurring, because the water's coming across and washing into that, into that culvert there. So let's address a couple of the points that were brought up. This is the, the first point is, this agreement was recorded, it was entered into, they were fully aware of it. You heard the explanation as to why there was chaos in the development team. I'm sure what happened, or speculating that perhaps there was not great communication as when people switched off on the development team, but we now have a new development team involved from the original development team, and that's when things like this occur. So the MoDOT issue was brought up. The only paperwork that we've seen from MoDOT, and first of all, me, I 100% agree with your conclusions about whether or not MoDOT would have any real say in this to begin with, but it's, the only paperwork we've seen would suggest that there was a preference on the part of MoDOT to have a circular pattern. We don't think the circular pattern is inconsistent with this access point in the back, okay? So even if MoDOT had an opinion, and even if their opinion mattered, I don't think it goes against the building of this access point. The second thing we've heard has to do with the approved site plan. So on the approved site plan, which, which, again, the applicant would have been, would have been Popeyes, they show what was obviously supposed to be this access point, the concrete there. On either side of that concrete, there is a note, and it says the 18-inch curb. The note is not in the access point. I specifically looked at it again just before driving up here. You can look at it, but there's an, there's a Note 20 on both sides.
And there's Note 21 that calls out for permanent barricade.
Well, there's, there is a Note 21, there's a Note 21 that I, that I think makes sense to amend, but the Note 21 doesn't relate to the, to the, to the 18-inch curb, which is to the left and to the right. There's nothing about that in the access point, but we would ask that Note 21 be deleted and replaced with, you know, pave even to adjacent property as the Note 21. So the, so did I answer the questions?
Yes. Jeff?
Mr. Hinke.
Yeah, very much so. The question is possibly, a couple things. I'm gonna talk to Mr. Lum also on this, what's come up on this whole thing. But my question, that comes next to you, John, possibly, that if this is a recorded cross-access agreement with St. Louis County, so it's a legal cross-access agreement that is in place as we speak, I don't think that we can, as a city council, can we speak to basically nullifying that cross-access agreement?
We cannot.
We cannot.
That is an agreement between two private parties, and again, I haven't studied it, so I don't know, and candidly, I'm not gonna arbitrate a dispute as to what Note 21 says or what Note 20 says.
Right.
That's up to them.
So I guess my...
The thing is that, that he's not convinced, and you're not convinced, that that's a MoDOT issue. Unfortunately, it's becoming our issue.
Well, and that's what I said, and I guess that's where, where I'm at in this position. I don't, if this is a recorded cross-access agreement, legally recorded and approved, I don't know that we can, that we have any say, that, that we can amend that, because it's, it's already been agreed to.
Correct. And any approved site plan by the city should be consistent with that recorded easement.
Very good.
And John, I wanna point to that point, the, in the original plan, the cross-access, the plan that was submitted to you all for approval, the cross-access that you referenced, the two-way cross-access that currently exists to get to Culvers, that was disclosed on the plan, but this agreement, our agreement that was on, that was recorded two years ago, was not disclosed on the plan that, that was submitted, because at least it's not on the plan that was approved. So, so you would have been aware of it, and you're absolutely right, that I think that the, what we do here has, should be consistent with, with the cross-access that's in place.
One further note on that, just one further, on that. On the whole MoDOT, and I'm not here to, to talk about that either, except to the point, there already exists a cross-access from Culvers, I guess would be heading west, into this lot. So if you can cross, if you can pull into Popeyes lot from Culvers and make a left to go out onto Lindbergh, well, then that defeats the whole MoDOT argument of having a circular, circular traffic pattern in that, because that would defeat the circular traffic pattern. So if that would be the case, I would have thought, if MoDOT would have argued, used that argument, if, in fact, that is their argument, they would use that same argument for the cross-access that exists with Culvers right now. That's all.
Mr. Egan.
Thank you. I'm not surprised that the project manager didn't show up tonight and sent you to the bull, so to speak. Correct me if I'm wrong, that we approved a masonry building, you just built whatever you wanted? you wanted?
We, we did not build whatever we want. We built the building that was approved on our, on our drawings. We submitted drawings. They were approved. We, our contractor picked up those drawings and built that building from the approved plans. I was not aware of the brick until Mr. Lum sent out a, an email with all these items that needed to be fixed. And that's, that's when we did some backtracking and figured out where things went. So I'd like to add one other thing on this MODOT thing. I respectfully disagree that MODOT's got no dog in this fight because without MODOT's approval, this project doesn't happen. We don't get a permit. You guys don't issue us a permit until they approve. There is paperwork, and I'm sure Popeyes is working with Mr. Lum on, on getting this paperwork done, or they've submitted, and I remember last time we were here with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that paperwork was shown. I just don't have that here. But without their, without their approval, this project doesn't happen. It, it doesn't go. They say, you do, the same with MSD. They have to approve, they tell us what needs to be done on a particular site, and if we don't do it, it's, it's, it's not gonna go anywhere. So they, they do have a dog in this fight. This came from them. Now, even on the approved plans that went into the city for the ordinance, that barricade is clearly listed there on those plans. So I don't know, I, I think it's a mistake having cars coming and going into oncoming traffic. I'm sure the guys that work there will probably know not to go straight out onto Lindbergh, especially when there's a curb cut right there on St. Charles, 10 feet north of the existing curb cut. But I do agree that the maintenance agreement, as shown here, was, not the maintenance agreement, but the cross-access agreement was coming out and then going out onto St. Charles where the existing curb cut exists only 10, 15 feet north of there. So I would be afraid that somebody leaves this lot after just getting their car serviced, I'm assuming that's, that's what's happening here, cars are being worked on, and just floors it the wrong way out this drive onto the oncoming traffic trying to exit off Lindbergh. So that's, that's our...
Jeff, excuse me on that, but I mean, that's sheer speculation, actually, come on. You speculate what if this happens or this happens or this happens, it doesn't remove the obligations that were in place for this. Your speculation does not remove that obligation. At this time, I would, could we possibly ask Mr. Lum for a little input onto this?
Thank you.
We're not all done yet, but...
We have several questions.
First, I'd like to exonerate Mr. Korlik a little bit. Edin Korlik is the second architect on the project. When we, so there is, there is some information that he did not have to do this project. And there's some information that the city did not have when this project was done. As Mr. Consilla's representative said, for instance, let's start with the easement. This is a portion of the... Sorry. This is a portion of the access from the highway. This is the existing curb cut that's been talked about. And this dashed line represents the Culvers easement, it's clearly shown on the survey. The information that the city did not have, as Mr. Consilla's folks have, as, have stated, is that when you go further into the site, sorry, this is a full-size drawing. And we go back to the rear area, as you can see that here. There's no such dashed notation about the easement. What Mr. Korlik didn't know and what the city did not know until last week was that this easement was recorded. We have correspondence, emails from the, Mr. Varley stating that it was not recorded, that it was a private agreement. Last week, we find out it is recorded from Mr. Consilla. So the city was not aware that there was a recorded easement because it wasn't on the site plan, it wasn't on the ALTA survey, it was just an omission. As I stated in my planning and zoning report, haste makes waste and sometimes things get omitted. And this information was crucial to reviewing this site plan and then the presentation to planning and zoning, because planning and zoning, if you read the recommendation, says to the council, if you read the minutes that are coming out, they did not want to involve themselves in any private agreement. But now we know that it's public. One more correction to Mr. Korlik is that when I, the correspondence that we received, staff requested MODOT's directive to Popeyes to eliminate this access. And what we received was actually a letter from Tate Engineering interpreting MODOT's request for counterclockwise circulation and one-way circulation. It did not specifically come from MODOT. So a few other points. The Consilla team here were pointing out these, and this is also why what some engineers and architects do. These little hexagonal notes are called keyed notes. And Note 21 says there's a barrier there. Their arrowheads go here and here. They point to, I don't know what, but there's, there's no detail of a barrier on the civil plans. It just says there's a barrier here and here. The 18-inch wall that you discussed is noted, Note Number 20. You can see Note Number 20 here. And it's called, Note 20 is called, eight, it's, I have to correct, it says, install 18-inch landscape wall to elevations and extends, I think it means extend, as shown on. That's what the note says. There's a mistake there, obviously. I think it says, I think it's, I think if I were to interpret the civil engineer's drawing, it would say that there's an 18-inch landscape wall here, here, and here. As the attorney pointed out, the arrow points here and the arrow points here, but Note 21 points here and here, slightly different locations. Notes eight and seven show, Note eight says, oh, Note seven says, install a six-inch type monolithic curb per MODOT detail. That's here. Number eight says terminate the curb here. So my interpretation would be that that's a six-inch curb, as the president of the council pointed out, not an 18-inch wall. 20, 20. We know the 18-inch wall is here and here, it's supposed to be a landscape wall, and it continues on down past this rain garden, which is here. So I just wanna make those corrections first. The original submission and then my staff report from planning and zoning had Tate Engineering alter the elevations to show brick. We expected to receive drawings from an architect that had brick. We did have a preliminary set of drawings submitted to the city, which showed brick in 2016. And then the unthinkable happened to Popeyes, they lost their architect in the midst of the project. And over a year passed, it was 2016 to June of 2017, I checked my dates on my letter back to new architect, who was never given the instruction to put brick on the building, and he put keyed notes on the elevations. And we did not pick up on the fact that the brick was omitted. But we did find this before, of course, the building had a ambitious two-month schedule of construction. And they kept the inspection team quite busy throughout the project, answering questions to try to get it open. And first, it was gonna be end of October, then it was gonna be November. They eventually received a conditional occupancy in, at the end of the year, which is currently expired. That, that's why we cooperated with the, with Popeyes, because we had given them conditional, we told them it was expired, we gave them a list of items, some of which were recorded on these documents, some of which were just incomplete. And they took the option of presenting an amendment to the city to try to alter the development plan rather than make all of the corrections. Any questions?
Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, and this whole process is, is really concerning to me. And, and like Mr. Hesel was saying earlier, I really don't wanna be an arbitrator on whatever agreement was there or wasn't there. I don't wanna be particularly in the, in the middle of that. However, if there is something recorded stating that Marty Consilla has their easement, then I mean, something needs to be worked out with that situation to protect his right of that, that easement. And then my other real concern is regarding this brick. I, I know you're, you weren't there in the beginning, you weren't the, the first architect. However, this is at your, your feet right now and it's something that you have to deal with. We have an ordinance for this brick for, for reasons and I, and you know, I'm not satisfied with, and I'm not saying you're doing this in particular, but we're just kinda just leaving it the way it is. There needs to be some proposal, something done to comply with our ordinance to our satisfaction. And I won't be, and I need to hear something from you to try and, and do that. To, to this point, I haven't heard anything. It's just kinda, let's just leave it the way it is and I'm, I'm not in agreement with that at all. You're probably gonna have to read that. Some people need some cheaters.
Just wanna show you guys, this is a signed and sealed letter from my structural engineer who, so to answer your question, we've done something about it. We've looked at options, we've looked at thin brick, we've looked at other items. Thin brick is also not approved by the ordinance as a masonry item. So, so it would be taking out something that's on the building and replacing with something that's non-conforming. So really, the only fix here is to add brick to the building. Now, to add brick to the, let me back up. To, to Mr. Lum's point here, I don't, I really don't think it's fair to say that, looking at the building drawings and not recognizing that there's no brick on the building for a trained architect or somebody else, and not seeing the difference between brick and EPAS material that's the majority of the building, I don't think it's fair to say that it was hidden in the keynotes. Okay? So as, as a, and I'm not blaming, I don't know if Mr. Lum did the review or whoever did the review, but it was clearly missed by the staff. And it was, it was a fast-paced project now.
Yeah, but in the original agreement, though, brick was included, correct?
True.
Isn't it up to you to, to review that original agreement?
It's up to them. It's up, it's up to...
It's not up to you?
No.
You don't look at the agreements before you start writing plans?
I wasn't even sure there was one in, in, in the works. I'll give you an example. Just recently, we went to the city of Collinsville. And I went through this entire, excuse me, I went through this entire process, we, they, they gave us directive to place an awning and three light fixtures, goos deck light fixtures on the back of the building and signage, okay? Throughout the drawings phase, I, I missed those three items. So we're talking about three light fixtures, an awning, and a signage on the back of the building. It was caught by their review. It said, hey, you didn't, we need that on there in order to approve this. It happens all the time. I mean, it's, it's not something, and, and I wanna make sure that there's, there was no malicious intent here. It was just a pure, simple mistake on, on everybody's, everybody's part. But to get back to the brick item here, this is a letter from a structural engineer who Mr. Lum knows as well, they've worked together in the past. I've used this engineer for the last 10 years. He's been in business for 25 years. Just some of his bullet points, and I'll read this out loud for the record. To whom, to whom it made concern, brick addition. The brick, the addition of brick to the prototype structure will create additional loading to the structure as it is designed. Seismic forces are based on the overall weight of a building structure and the addition of brick veneer will increase the building design load. Lateral loading due to seismic forces will have effect on the lateral resisting elements. Roof deck diaphragm shear resistance will be changed, thus roof nailing will be increased. In order to increase the roof nailing, you have to tear off everything off of that roof down to the structure and, and add a different nailing pattern. Shear wall resistance, throughout the building, we have shear walls that help with the earthquake loads. If, if a earthquake would happen, God forbid, those shear walls would keep that building and the building's occupants safe. Shear walls resistance, thus exterior wall panels nailing will be increased, meaning we would have to tear off everything from the inside and outside of that building structure to reinforce that nailing pattern. Shear wall, shear wall uplift resistance by the hold downs. Hold down brackets are metal devices that attach to those shear walls and they go deep into the concrete footing. Those would have to be upgraded. How? Other than leveling the whole thing and restarting, I, you know, there's a couple of other points. Foundations that the hold down devices, tall parapet walls that are, you know, receive, that would receive brick, it's just impossible to do with the current structure.
I'd like to, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, um, did you, did you discuss with Mr. Lum? I know you said that it doesn't meet the ordinance in terms of the other type of, of brick, but is there any discussion on the, I'm sorry, not the real brick, the, the thin brick? That might help resolve this, this issue? Was there any discussion between yourself and, and Mr. Lum on that?
What staff did was ask if there was an estimate of costs that they, that the petitioner could provide with this proposed amendment that, that they could come up with to determine what it would take to fix it, because you know, with every decision, cost is sometimes a factor in, in deciding this way or that way. Thin brick is an option aesthetically. The masonry ordinance specifically excludes thin brick instead of a full width brick because of the, the way it's installed, thin brick might perform differently. However, in this case, it might be a potential solution to solve the aesthetic portion since there's a structural difficulty, great difficulty in putting full height brick on it. I discussed with planning and zoning, and I, and I do know Mr. Crayer, the structural engineer, I don't doubt his abilities to redesign the building with full brick, but he could also redesign the building for thin brick. What I told planning and zoning was that in the case of full width brick, structural engineers get extremely nervous once the height exceeds 14 feet. And the Popeyes is about 10 feet taller than that point. So I don't think that there would be much of an issue if say, for instance, the, the brick veneer were put on to a certain height of 10 or 12 feet. But it becomes a great issue when you hang it at 23 feet because of the overturning loads that are involved. So thin brick also is possibly a solution to that, although it is heavier than EPAS.
Do we have a, a copy of that document that you were reading from? That, was that provided to us? I don't, I don't think I see it here.
Yeah, it was submitted to planning and zoning.
It was, okay, all right. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
I guess I'll wait till the last question and then I'll come back up, Jeff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Sholdoff.
Mr. President, this is actually in your field, so my question was to you, do you know of a product that would, do you concur with Mr. Lum?
Yeah, the, the thin brick is just a, it's, like he said, it's aesthetic or it's, and it's, it's cos- cosmetic. I mean, I know it's an EPAS system building, correct? The three foot up is the brick and then the rest is EPAS. And I know you can cut the EPAS out and add this, add the brick. But like you say, once we get over taller, anything taller, then, then you are starting to get heavy structural. See now, I discussed that with Mr. Hinky earlier, or last night, and we were discussing the same... the same thing about possibly tearing out the EPHIS so many feet, just like Mr. Lum was saying, and then possibly just putting the, um, the, um, thin brick up for as, as for the, um, veneer. And I, money-wise, I have no clue which, but we definitely need to get this, this fixed. I know structurally, like, it can, brick is heavy. I mean, the studs, because you're, I'm sure it's steel studs on the walls, you go down to the studs, they are wood studs? Hmm. So, I know the backing of the drywall, the glassboard is different from what you put for EPHIS and for brick. I do know that. So, I mean, that would have to be also removed and, and replaced.
That's all I hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, that in itself would not be an easy task either. Because you're, I mean, and I don't know if you guys, you guys probably drove, drove by the building by now, it's, to my eyes, it looks good. It's a good-looking building. It's weather tight, it works, there's no leaks, there's no, so now we're opening up potential items by tearing something out that's been built the first time around and, and, for the lack of better words, slapping something on there just to make it look good. But I also want to make the note that we will be replacing a non-conforming material with what's in, in your zoning code, a non-conforming material. So I don't know how fair that would be too. Just, just want to make sure, to make a note of that.
Ms. Pagano?
Well, right now, I, I'm, I'm just real confused, because here, here's the ordinance. I mean, clear as day, it's the first item in bold print. I mean, how we all missed it is beyond me, especially when you came before us with the public hearing. And I know for a fact on the public hearings, we asked to see the material of the buildings and insist that. So for you, just to, just-
I wasn't here for that.
Then whoever was here or whoever is responsible for that person here should be here tonight. Because I don't know what to tell you to do. Because right now, you come in and do this, and we say, oh, it's okay, because they didn't see bold print in the first line of the ordinance, we're just gonna let them go. So the next guy comes in and they do the same thing. I mean, this is, it, it's not right, it doesn't make sense. I don't even know why we're wasting all this time when it's clearly right here and at the first public hearing. And I know that because my signature's on this ordinance, that we would have questioned it, and we would have passed around the material and the paint colors that you chose for that building.
The gentleman that's not here tonight wasn't part of the public hearing, it was somebody else.
Sir, could you get up to the microphone so we can hear?
He's in a lot of miles.
I know it's moving around like that, which is late.
I'm just asking.
My rehab is gonna go better. I, what I wanted to say, that the, the gentleman that couldn't make it out here tonight because he's in Colorado on, on, on business, he was not part of that public hearing, and I was not part of the public hearing, and the architect, engineering team that was part of the public hearing disappeared and took, never shared any of their drawings, documents, or anything else.
So you just built a building to build it because you, nobody shared anything? So nobody thought to come question the city and find your plans? Or to question, it doesn't make any sense.
The, the process of designing a building is you get a site, and you get information, what you get, and you design the building, you engineer it, and you submit it to the authority seven jurisdiction for review. They then look at the building and say, well, this is really not what's supposed to be there. Please fix this. And it happens all the time. This is not something new, guys. You know, so to say, and, and I don't have the resources and the time for every project to go and, and find out, you know, hey, Mr. Lum, hey, ci- city councils, you know, the guy before me, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it just doesn't happen.
Well, that's sort of, we're the ones who approve you to come here. We're the ones who give you the permit. What do you mean you don't have the time? I mean, that's how you get into cities, you have to go in front of the council.
And you had your chance to approve the drawings when we submitted them to the city for review, and it was missed.
The, the brick was not-
It was not on the drawings, but it was missed during the city review.
The miss, it's, it's right here. They would have showed us it in that public hearing.
Yes, but the last-
For clarity, what he's talking about is after the ordinance is approved, they submit plans to the city staff for the city staff to review. The city staff reviewed it and approved it, and Phil, you can address it, without coordinating it through the ordinance. So, the question is, who has responsibility to review the ordinance to ensure that the plans being approved that ultimately authorize the building of the building? In my opinion, the answer is both.
Imagine that I'm speechless right now, Mr. Hessel.
I figured you would be.
I thank you very much on that.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, okay. The way I'm looking at this, I'm gonna do a couple things right here. It's, this has got the feel to it that, well, this is the way we should have built it, but this is the way we did build it, so we want you to change the rules to accept what we built. Now, I understand that's generalizing it, and I understand the cost that's involved, but I would like to see some alternatives, some effort to comply with the ordinance, some kind of good faith. We could do this, we could do this. I'm not telling you to tear the building down, that seems unreasonable to me because there's enough to go around, it's not gonna happen. But I think there is other solutions that are possible, and especially with the cross access.
Mr. Hinky? Mr. Hessel has some comments?
If I may, Mr. Hinky, I'm trying to be careful because I don't know all of the facts.
Right.
I can just tell you that from a responsibility standpoint, it is up to the developer, and the architects developers, to submit plans that are consistent with the ordinance. At the same time, it is up to staff to make sure that those plans that are submitted to the city are consistent with the ordinance.
Okay, would it be proper-
So it's not as if a developer comes in and builds a building without approval of the city.
Right.
In this case, they did get approval of the city.
Okay. Would it be proper at this time to possibly continue this public hearing?
Well, I would, in fact, I was gonna recommend that some time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think there's, there's two issues. One is the issue that I will address, which is I, I will advise the city council more formally as to what the obligations were, as I alluded to as well, the architects team, the development team, as well as the obligations of the city staff, and perhaps provide advice as to what we should do under these very unusual circumstances. More importantly, I shouldn't say more important, equally as important, is Mr. Lum needs to address with MoDOT, whether or not MoDOT is insisting that this easement not be granted. And again, I'm not, I don't know enough about it. I'm just a lawyer. I don't get into engineering. In fact, if I did, I would be really bad at it. But I know enough to ask staff to go to MoDOT and say, what is your position based upon all of what you've heard? I'm sure that you all found this as riveting as I did, which is looking at Note 21 and Note 21, all they meant. Thank God, I don't do that for a living either. Kevin Williams and others do that, everything. But they, you're a legislative body, we need to bring to you a clear proposal and clear explanations as to what you should be doing. And it may involve sending it back to P and Z.
Right.
I haven't ruled that out yet.
Right.
Better put, I haven't ruled out making a recommendation that's ultimately left up to you.
So would it be proper at this time then to offer, make a motion that we continue this public hearing?
Correct.
May I just add something about the MoDOT thing? MoDOT is not a legislative body. They don't, they don't put out laws or rules or ordinances. The way the process of MoDOT works is civil engineer submits the first round of drawings for them to review. They look at it, they mark it up, they make comments, they say, well, this doesn't work, this doesn't work, and send it back to the engineer. Same with MSD, same process. They do, they fix those comments, send it back to them, they review it again, come up with more comments. So it's, it's a three, four, sometimes five times back and forth with those, with those guys. So to say that there would be some sort of a rule or law or, or some sort of a note from them, we would just have to go back to the civil engineers, you know, saying where, you know, where were those review comments made by MoDOT to make, to, to tell us to make this a one-way, one-way access? But that's, that's how that works with them. That's the procedure.
Well, nonetheless, you, you used it as your argument here this evening, though, that it was basically mandated by MoDOT. Okay, so, but then you said MoDOT doesn't have the authority to mandate that, so that's, that's two different animals. But, and nonetheless, I, I make a motion that we continue this for two meetings.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Jeff, I'd just like to make a note tonight, since Mr. Consilla is here tonight. Uh, Mr. Consilla, the property that we're talking about that backs up to one of our most beautiful parks here in our city, uh, I've been leaned on now for a couple of years about the green screen on the back of that fence. We have a lot of people-
Mr. Jones at his arms. That's, we'll, we'll address that at another time.
Okay.
Second on the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion that to continue the, um, public hearing to our next council meeting, second by-
One's two meetings, September 10th.
Make a motion for two meetings. September 10th to continue this. It was second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item on agenda is public hearing number 1808027.
In accordance with Section 405.310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, August 13th, 2018, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize amendment to special use permit number 8223 to Grace and Mercy Adult Program 2 LLC, DBA Grace and Mercy Adult Program, to allow for the addition of adult daycare to a banquet event center in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 11 Patterson Plaza Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone in special needs to contact the city clerk at least five days before, before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TV 8395142.
The petitioner present? Could you state your name, please?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I am Juanita Galette at 15420 Fort de France Lane, 63 Florissant, Missouri, 63034.
Thank you. You have the floor, ma'am.
Okay. I'm here to request to authorize an amendment to special use permit to Grace and Mercy Adult Program Number 2 LLC. And it's due, we have a banquet center now that we utilize on the weekends, but during the weekday, from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, we would like to have Grace and Mercy Adult Daycare Program. That's what we're here for, to get approval.
Okay. Juanita, I have a couple of questions. First off, nobody contacted me on this adult daycare center. I am the councilman in Ant Ward. I know Ms. Dulick, Dulick? Sonia?
Yes.
Sonia, when she first opened Metro?
Yes.
She was contacting me, sat down, talked about what she wanted, and, um, came to us, public hearing, we approved it. And now, when this came about, when we get the agenda, this is on the agenda, I don't know nothing about it.
Okay.
And, um, this is totally a surprise. I mean, who's gonna be running the actual daycare center? Sonia?
No, actu- well, we're in partnership right now. We're in partnership, there's Sonia, Dulick, and myself, and Mark Galette. Uh, we're in partnership, we have, we're partners with the Metropolitan Clubhouse, and also we're, uh, wanna utilize the building during the daytime for the adult day program. So-
Have you-
Mm-hmm.
What has Cozett's, the realtor, the property manager, say about this?
They approved it.
They approved it.
They approved it. We sat down with them, Sonia Dulick and myself sat down with them, and we sat down with the lawyer and Mr. Louie, I can't remember his last name, and Mr. Cozett. And, um, they took it for about a month, and then they send a letter of improvement. They approved it.
My other question is, you have to have a state license, correct?
That's correct.
Now, who's qualified for, will there be any kind of medicine on, on site?
Yes, we have, uh, there will be medicine, we have a RN on standby to be hired in, and we have other staff that's ready to be hired in. We are, once it's approved here, uh, if it's approved by you all, then state comes in, and they go through the building, you know, they do whatever they have to do, and they license us. Uh, we do have people who used to own adult daycares who's part of the staff also.
Now, which part of the actual metro will you be utilizing? Because there's actually three, that's three buildings in one.
Yes, all three. Uh, all three. One of the rooms or one of the sides will be, uh, will be the adult, what do we call it, game room, recreational room. Uh, the middle part will be for food and eating and things like that. And the third part will be for relaxation with lounging chairs, library, and just relaxing.
Now, would, when your, your hours of operation are?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM until 4:00 PM.
And now, the special use permit for the metro is from 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM?
Correct.
Yes. So, and that's, that's the conflict that I'm having.
Mm-hmm.
Because of what we're authorizing, what you're asking is for us to authorize a special use permit for an adult daycare from 7:00 to 4:00, when there's another business sitting in there that has it from 7:00 to 1:00 AM, correct?
No, we're, no, sir. The adult day program is gonna be from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The events that we have are mainly on the weekends, um, on the weekends of Friday evenings through Sunday evening, and we usually shut down things at 12:00 AM.
The ordinance is written. So, Saturday is under events, and then 7:00 to 4:00.
So you're, you're stating that you don't think that would be a conflict of-
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all.
Okay. Um, now, is your, is your facility that you have, is it equipped to have how many adults?
How many adults? It's equipped to have, um, 200 adults in the facility, but we're looking at the people that comes in for the adult program, uh, I think it's 132 that we were looking at, plus the staff that we're gonna have.
Now, what about, um, food?
Food is gonna be catered in by, we went to the health department to know the ins and out, what we have to have, and we went to state. Uh, we're, uh, conversating back and forth with state to see what are, what they need to have, and the catering that we're going to check out, well, we're waiting for a couple of caterers to come to us. And, uh, they said we can have hot meals, cold meals, but this is what they have to have, their license and different things. I don't have that part with me, but they will be certified through state also.
So actually Sonia is gonna be the actual owner of this?
No, we're- No, we're partners. We're equal owners.
Equal, in metro or just a day, adult daycare?
In metro and also the adult daycare. It's actually adult day program. I keep saying adult daycare.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Egan?
Thank you. So, on these rooms, you're gonna have, like, recliners and TVs and stuff, is that correct?
Yes, in one of the rooms, we were gonna have, um, lounging chairs, TV, little music, and also library for them to read.
What will you do with this stuff when it's time for an event?
Oh, we will hire in the staff on Friday evenings. They will break down, put it in storage, uh, put it in storage, and we'll set up for the evening events, or the weekend events. It's not much moving at all, 'cause we're utilizing tables and chairs and different things like that.
I mean, I do, I see there'd be some dual-purpose tables and such, yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, well, I'd like to come by and take a look at it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's all I got. Mr. Kaputa.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just a couple of questions. I think Joe touched on the one, 'cause I noticed in your plans, you said there's no, uh, no intentions of remodeling, construction plans are not applicable, so you're not gonna make any changes. And that was kinda my question when Mr. Egan asked, how do you flip the, from completely different use to an event center? Uh, it seems like the two wouldn't mix very well.
Um, it, it's storage and people to move-
Okay.
-the event. It's not much. It's probably, the only thing that we really have to move is maybe the few games, like the small pool table and the foosball and stuff, put that in storage, and also the lounging chairs. But everything else, and then the TVs, everything else is ready for events during the weekend.
I guess my question kinda stems from the visual in my mind of just housing people for eight hours a day. You know, I mean, sure you got the space to put 'em in-
Yes, sir.
-but is it a comfortable space for them, just to be occupying their, their spot? Also, I know we have, uh, I'm pretty sure, correct me on this, on ordinance on daycare, regular daycares in strip plazas?
Child daycare.
Child daycare?
That doesn't apply to the adult.
They're not allowed.
Okay. Though, I mean, the, the child daycares are not allowed in, 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 in strip plazas?
Adult daycares are not prohibited.
Not prohibited. Okay. I have no questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Miss Hinky? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, what do I know, you said something about drugs earlier. What, what will happen with them?
We have a R. N. That is gonna be hired in, that deals with, uh, anyone that has to have drugs. Um-
So the drugs then will be, uh, put in storage, I guess, with the rest of the stuff?
We have a-
And then brought back out?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a, a room, uh, in the, we call it the reception area, where there's gonna be a twin-size bed there, a desk for the R. N. And a refrigerator, and that's how the medicine is gonna be, uh, stored. However, uh, whatever, uh, the R. N., the R. N. Is the expert on that. But, uh, that's how we're gonna have that.
Well, I'm talk, my concern is about the evening, uh, whatever happens in the evenings, uh, what's gonna happen with the medication, is what I'm saying. Is there gonna be a, a safe or something? This stuff's gonna be locked up in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That room, and also, um, the equipment that the R. N. Is gonna have, everything is gonna be locked up and stored. That part of the facility is not gonna be used for the weekends. It's just the secu-, four-year secretary area.
Okay, this, this is kinda new to us. We've never seen, uh, uh, somebody do what you're trying to do now, so this is very-
Yes, sir.
...uh, different and, uh, uh, hard for us to accept, especially we don't, uh, we're trying to get away with, uh, in these shopping centers, period.
Mm-hmm.
But now, you know, this is getting brought more back on us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, yes, um, you're saying, you're talking about storage?
Yes, sir.
Are, are you utilizing your, one of your rooms for your storage?
Yes, we're utilizing one of the rooms for the storage, and also, we're, uh, talking to, um, Cosette Realty. Uh, one of the associates is Louis, which I can't remember his last name, and we're trying to get number seventeen next to, uh, the last building that we have. It's number seventeen that's connected. And they mentioned to us that we could use it for storage. Now we're going through the process, uh, trying to get that part just for storage. And we told them, no utilities or anything has to go into the storage. We just want that for storage. But right now, we still have, uh, storage that's in back of the second room, the middle room. There's a small storage area that things can be put in. So we have that, but we would love to have number seventeen to put things in there also.
'Cause I, I wanna ask, or piggyback on what Mr. Jones said about the, about the drugs and that, what, the narcotics. We know-
Yes.
-some people are on narcotics.
Yes.
And narcotics with the opiates is a big thing nowadays. I mean, um, a lot of them break in pharmacies, steal 'em. If somebody knows that they have your narcotics sitting there, and basically, you'll have a safe, correct?
Yes, sir. And what, we're not expecting to keep medication overnight. This is adult day program where they're gonna do, um, a lot of socializing and things like that. And normally, um, well, when they leave for the evening, they take their medications with them. They take their medications with them. Uh, things like, uh, aspirin or ibuprofen or something like that, we will maybe keep some of that in the building, but nothing, not their, um, major medications. I don't know what to, they're hard medications, I don't know what to call them, but, uh, their primary medication that will go back with them. We, we're not storing any hard medications or primary medications there.
Prescription drugs.
Prescription drugs, yes, sir. There we go. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
How many restroom facilities do you have there right now?
We have three.
You have three?
Yes, sir.
You, you have a men's, a women's? How does, explain this to me, 'cause I've never been in a building.
We, we have three restrooms, uh, right now for the evening programs, or the evening facilities. Um, whoever uses the rooms, that's the restroom they use, the restrooms they use. When state comes in, uh, we're kinda ready for states where, uh, this is gentlemen's restroom, this is women's restrooms. Also, next, not too far from the restrooms, they want water fountains. So we're getting the water fountains also for them.
So with staff, how many people total do you think you'll have in there at, at best guest?
Best, best guest?
Your best senses?
Um, about twelve, seven to twelve.
Twelve, twelve people?
Yes.
I thought you said you were one of the hundred and thirty people in there.
Yes, sir. That's what they said our max is. But right now, we are working low, and right now, we have seven staff that's waiting to be hired in.
Seven staff?
Yes.
And how many, how many, um, clients would you have with seven staff?
With seven staffs, we have the R. N., we have, um, the program coordinator, and then we have the three, the, um, patient, not patient, I'm sorry, uh, coordinators who help out during the day. So we're talking about, right now, we have, we won't have no more than ten right now to come in.
Ten.
One state approves us, yes.
Ten people?
Yes.
Ten patients?
Yes, one state.
So that'd be seventeen people initially for three bathrooms?
Initially, yes, sir.
That seems a little thin to me, especially if you decide to grow. I mean, I would, I would-
This-
I would be concerned if, let's say it got very popular, all of a sudden you had fifty people come in-
Yes.
-and now we, we have, uh, sixty people or so using three bathrooms.
And then we will have, well, using the bathrooms.
Right. That's my concern is, the number of restroom facilities per people. It seems woefully thin to me.
Yes. We're gonna, when state comes in, and the state is working with us now, um, just conversating with us, whatever the state, uh, regulations are, we're gonna follow.
Okay.
Uh, we let them know already, we have three bathrooms, and they wanted to know women, men's bathroom-
Right.
-and then staff bathroom. So we do have that, and, uh, they went by the max of people that's coming in.
Right.
And they said, well, that's what you need, the two bathrooms, but you need three water fountains, you need double sinks, and, and, uh, so we're going exactly whatever state says. We're gonna go by whatever the law is.
Okay, it just-
Yes, sir.
I, I guess my concern is, and we've had this with different businesses before, if we, if we authorize this and there's three bathrooms-
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I guess it's, I, I wanna make sure that we, when we get the number right, whatever, we, we stick to that number. We don't bring in a hundred people if we've, if we've approved it for, for fifty. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. It makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Hinky?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions on this, basically adult daycare, okay, that's what we're calling this. What ki- what kind of freedom of movement do your, would your customers have? I mean, are they, I can't think of a better word. I don't mean to put a negative connotation on it, but confined. Are they free to come and go throughout, or throughout the day? Or are they, are they staying in that building all day?
Um, the ones we, um, they're actually, the ones that drive there is adult day program, so it's, uh, they socialize, we go on field trips, uh, we have, um, computer programming, uh, computer, um, lessons, or teaching them how to work the computer. We have reading classes, it's things like that. Um, activities for them, keeping them. We have, um, like, a nutritionist coming in to, to show them how to eat, what's the right things to eat, um, things like that. It's not just, uh, like, adult sitting, but it's adult day program where we're interacting with them. Uh, we're, um, doing different things, bringing people in, uh, to help them to feel good about themselves and to keep them going and-
Okay, but would you, I guess my question to that point is, and so this is like a more social interaction, okay?
Yes, sir.
Will you be accepting customers, or what are, patients, whatever you call them, that require observation, that, for fear of them wandering off? You know, will you be accepting people that are at risk?
Yes, sir. That are at, a, a certain risk, a certain risk. Um, we have, um, information about this thick, uh, from state, who we can bring in, who we can't bring in. Um, and if we do bring them in, what type of, uh, staff that we need to hire in for that. So we're taking in consideration of all of that. Uh, if it's someone that constantly wanders off, we may not be taking them in-
Right.
-at all. But, uh, because of what state says, whatever state is gonna let, state is letting us know what we can and cannot do, and we're gonna follow the guidelines.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's very important. If, if somebody chose to, to drop a parent off there in the morning-
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to be funny about it, but they wanna make damn sure they're there in the afternoon when he pick 'em up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Mr. Egan?
Uh, Mr. Hustle, there's a lot of questions I have about this. Would it be proper for me to offer a postponement until we get some of these, of these questions answered? It seems like having, not knowing what the state is and is not gonna require, kinda puts me in a bad position. If we're gonna do this for a first reading tonight.
Clearly within your discretion to continue the public hearing to obtain additional information.
I would, I would feel a little more comfortable just having more information than, than, than we have right now. And you said, when is the state gonna come in and?
They're coming in after the approval here. They're waiting for approval here, and they're gonna come in and go through everything with us, but, yeah.
I'm gonna move to postpone to the next council meeting, this public hearing, just so I can get, get, in this, in this two-week period, maybe we can get some more information where I can feel more comfortable about where we are, uh, with this proposal, 'cause it seems, eh, a lot of unanswered questions. And, and some questions you can't even answer 'cause you don't know what you're up against yet, fair?
Um, I know what I'm up against.
Well, you, I mean, you can't tell me how many, exactly how many bathrooms you need. You can't tell me how many water fountains you need, you know?
No, state said, uh, when they knew, they asked us, how many restrooms do we have? We have three restrooms, and he said it needs to be male, female, and staff. And that's exactly what we have. Male, female, and staff.
Okay, and let's just stop right there at that. When you have male, female, you have three restrooms, and you really have, uh, you've told us you could plan to have a hundred and thirty-three people, and I, again, I'm, I'm very unhappy with putting a hundred and thirty-three people-
Mm-hmm.
-in a facility with three restrooms, uh, one for men, one for women, so you're only like two restrooms because the staff uses the third one.
Yes.
Again, I'm gonna move for, for postponement. I'd like you to get with Mr. Kaputa, and maybe I'd like to come down and look at this facility and, and see what we're up against, 'cause I've not had the opportunity to tour it, I'll be honest.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Egan, I was thinking the same thing, and I was gonna make the same motion. Uh, the, there's a motion that we continue this, um, public hearing till the next council meeting, August twenty-seventh, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the bill, on the agenda, old business. First item on the bit, old business is bills for a second reading. Bill number nine four zero four.
A third edition.
I was gonna get to it. Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars in the park improvement fund to account number six one four four zero, capital outlay for the purpose of funding digital signs for the JFK Community Center.
For divina photos taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak
Hi there. Ben Hammond, sixteen twenty, Florissant Park. I didn't know I was gonna see, get to see an episode of Suits tonight. I was waiting for Harvey Specter to come in. That was really cool with Popeyes. Um, so, I think it's interesting that we, um, are continuing items when we don't have information, when there's a lot of information that we don't have about these signs. Uh, for instance, we've talked about this bundle savings that we, that we get, but we really don't know what the savings is. It's not quantifiable. Is it a hundred dollars? Is it ten thousand dollars? We're not really sure. We also don't know if the vendor, maybe we could leverage two signs instead of three. I mean, that's a real possibility. We don't know. People like to sell signs, I think, if you're in the sign-selling business. Um, the other thing that we don't know is, we don't know if this sign is safe for this area. I know a lot of other cities have ordinances where you can't have digital signs within so many feet of an intersection. I mean, I think the sign at the Justice Center, there's no traffic signals nearby, or the police department, there's not really a traffic signal. Well, there's not a traffic signal directly within, I, I don't know, fifty feet, or whatever the ordinance might be. Maybe it's a hundred feet. I didn't read them specifically. But I know that that exists, and that with the all more digital signs coming into play, that cities are looking at putting in ordinances, limiting where they can be installed in regards to a traffic signal. Um, and then I also think another piece is that whether we want to acknowledge it or not, there was a poll done on social media, and over five hundred people opposed this sign. That it was five hundred saying no, they didn't wanna spend the money on the sign, and it was less than twenty saying that they did. And maybe some of those people that answered the poll don't live in Florissant, but the large majority of them do. Um, and that's the only real data that we have to look at when we're making the deci, when you're making the decision, in my opinion, is that you have people saying they don't wanna spend the money on the sign in a great overwhelming majority. We don't have data that shows how many cars pass by there a day. We don't have data showing that these signs are effective. We're, it seems to me that decisions are being made just on a gut feel that the sign will increase communication. And I think that there's possibly other ways, less expensive ways, more effective ways to increase communication than a digital sign.
Mr. Harris?
I'm gonna wait until the, the, if I, if I may, wait until the speakers are done.
Ms. Pagano?
I don't think it was from before.
Robert, how you doing?
Good. Robert Smith, uh, two eight two three, Chapelview Drive. Um, yeah, there's a lot of concern- Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive, yeah, there's a lot of concern about these, spending these three signs, and there is very little information as to like Mr. Hammond was saying, what are the savings, I mean, versus just getting two signs? I mean, right now, there is no swimming pool or Aqua Center at, you know, the, at Coke Park, I think that money can be used for something else, $50,000 is a lot of money to put into a sign, and I'm thinking that we can do something else with that money for the Kennedy Center, but I do think that we need a lot more information for these signs, as for us, like you said, can we get a deal on two signs instead of three, and revisit it later once we decide if we're gonna do something with the pool again, but we do need more information on these three signs, that's $150,000, and I know where some of the money's coming from, but the other money, I think we can do something better with. Thank you.
My granddaughter, fifth generation, Cordy born here and raised in Florissant, her mom is now looking for a home across that God-forsaken bridge, because Florissant does not offer enough for this generation, and as long as you guys keep stealing from Peter to pay part on things we don't need, it's gonna continue to be like that, you're gonna run people off, people don't move here for a sign, I mean, you're all on Facebook, you're all on social media, you saw the results, nobody's happy with this, so please keep my granddaughter here.
My name is Alad Laus, as I live at 2497 Clover Merrick Court, and I've been in Florissant my whole life practically, and I really don't see the need for the sign, I don't know what is it going to say, Coke Park Pool is closed because we don't have enough money, but we're gonna put a sign up to tell you that, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I would like to express my reservations regarding the ordinance 9404 authorizing $21,122 from the Park Improvement Fund, and total purchase of $51,122 for a digital sign for the JFK Community Center. When the ordinance was first introduced at the last regular council meeting, I posed questions I believe were not adequately answered. In the weeks following the introduction of the ordinance, more citizens of Florissant became aware of the sign proposal and expressed overwhelmingly dissatisfaction with the idea of both the matter of which the sign was being funded, and the safety concerns about the location of the sign. They also proactively offered many logical ideas on how to increase communication throughout the city without such new signage. Many noted great opposition to the funding of the sign from the Parks Improvement Fund, although on park property, many believe the intended communication via the new sign is not intended mainly for promoting the parks and recreation events, the largest portion of comments offered on the issue were related to an uncertain feeling about whether the Parks Improvement Funds would be enough to replace aging vital amenities, and they desired to see a more overall intentional planning process and saving of any possible funds for what the community most desires in our future parks system. After considering and researching issues related to sign placement, I also maintain safety concerns, which I have expressed to my council colleagues and city officials, I discovered our sign ordinances have not yet been updated to reflect digital signage, which may address some of the unique safety concerns the citizens presented. Also, updates would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council a better framework for consistent consideration of sign applications, digital sign applications. On July 31st, in response to my inquiry, Mr. Lum, the Building Commissioner, expressed a need for such updates, and that some attempt was made to update the ordinance in 2012, but was not successful. And I asked for information, 'cause the document that I got about that did not have all the attachments that were included, so I, I'm still waiting on that information. Regarding these stated concerns, I would advise for the city leadership to, number one, attempt once again to study potential safety hazards presented by digital signage, and work to update the ordinance accordingly. Number two, initiate a more comprehensive process to study the needs of our parks' infrastructure, including extensive citizen input, and develop both a multi-year and a long-term plan for prioritizing Park Improvement Fund spending to achieve the core goals our community develops and what they expect. Thank you, and I have this as a letter, and I'd like to enter that into the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have a couple of things I want to say in regards to this particular issue, I understand that there's been much discussion in the public regarding the city council's vote regarding a digital sign at JFK Community Center in particular. I continued to research this issue even through last night, so I understand the concerns that people have, and I don't take this issue lightly. First of all, I know that there is a concern about the amount of money that is being spent on the three signs collectively, the council's intent was to bid a price for the three signs in hopes of getting a discounted price rather than paying full price for each sign individually. A request for bids was put out by the city, and the city chose the lowest bidder that had vast experience in building the signs that were requested. With the new Justice Center, I believe that it is a priority to have a sign that matches the new facility that we have built, and the cost of this sign is already included in the budget for the Justice Center. Additionally, the sign at the police station will be paid by asset for future funds, which I don't believe impact the city's budget negatively. This brings us to the issue at hand, which is the sign at JFK. As you all are aware, the cost of JFK sign exceeds the $30,000 amount that was included in the city's budget, which is why the mayor has requested an additional $21,122 from the Park Improvement Fund to pay for the cost of a JFK sign. The problem is, is if we don't purchase the JFK sign, the other two signs will have to be bid again, and will increase the cost of the Justice Center sign and the police station sign. Therefore, it will set off any portion of savings that we may receive by doing the JFK sign. In my opinion, approaching the bid process as a bundle was a prudent and reasonable business decision for the city of Florissant, although I understand it may not be a popular decision with the public, I think in the long run, the sign can serve a great purpose when we ultimately develop an aquatic center that the residents require, and then at that point, we won't have to purchase a sign for the JFK individually in the future at a greater expense. Secondly, however, the issue of public safety is what I really struggled with in regards to these signs. There are many studies that are out there discussing the safety of digital signs, and one study says that a distraction of a driver for longer than two seconds increases the likelihood of a crash by 3.7 times. External vehicle tasks such as looking at the digital signs require 3.54 seconds of a driver's attention compared to 1.35 seconds of a driver's attention for internal vehicle tasks such as changing the radio station. In my research, the study most mentioned was done by the Federal Highway Administration in 2013, which later explained by the national, which was later explained by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Ultimately, they determined that the longest glance in the direction of a digital billboard was well within the safety threshold set by the federal government. They concluded that the longest fixation on a digital billboard was 1.34 seconds compared to fixation on a standard billboard of 1.28 seconds. However, this study has not come without its criticism from groups not affiliated with the federal government or affiliated with the advertising industry. I also reviewed a detailed study from 2009 by a Mr. Jerry Watchel, who is the president of the Veridian Group Incorporated from Berkeley, California. He concluded many factors make it difficult to come to a conclusion, to come to a conclusive answer to the safety of digital billboards, because every billboard is different, and viewing billboards at night is different than viewing billboards in the daylight, and also the duration of the message on the billboards plays a factor in determining their safety. Lastly, a nonprofit organization named Scenic America filed a lawsuit against the U.S. Department of Transportation, saying that the digital billboards violate the prohibition on billboards that have intermittent lights, otherwise known as a Severn case. Scenic America's case was heard by a U.S. District Court Judge that ultimately dismissed the case, it was appealed by Scenic America to the U.S. Court of Appeals in D.C., and that, that appeal was rejected. And then on October 16th of 2017, the U.S. Supreme Court denied Scenic America's writ of certiorari, am I saying that right, John, certiorari, which is basically an appeal to the Supreme Court, however, the judge, the judge who wrote the opinion by the Supreme Court said that the issues lying at its core were surely worthy of consideration, but he still, they still decided not to hear it. So ultimately, what we, what do we do with this situation? I've already seen plenty of digital signs around the St. Louis area, I saw three digital signs within about two blocks of University City near Heeman Park, there are already digital signs in Florissant at McClure North High School, St. Ferdinand School, Commercial Bank, True Value Hardware, Culvers, American Eagle Credit Union, and Neighbors Credit Union that's on Houders Shell right next to the JFK Center, and also another digital sign at the James J. Egan Center. Digital billboards can be used for Amber Alerts, they can be used to help find fugitives, and they can be used to deliver emergency information, so they do have their benefits. If these signs are continued to be allowed, I think that there should be a restriction on the signs from here on in interest of public safety, there should be no animation or no full-motion video allowed, there should be a restriction on the brightness of the signs, the sign should not be too close to the road, and the sign should be restricted in duration, and only have between four and seven-second messages. In regards to the JFK sign and its funding, I believe that we should investigate it and see if St. Louis County would contribute to the cost of the sign, as Councilman Harris previously stated in the last meeting. And, you know, I just basically wanted to say all that for information purposes, and I guess we'll have the vote on that tonight, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Parson, for all the research, that was really well, well done. Can I come back to the question of, do we know the savings of the sign bundle? Okay, and also, did the city already choose the lowest bidder, or has there, okay, we already did, all right, and there was, is an email I got today about a sign that was disapproved, I have to look into it still, and I forward that on to you all, but there was someone from a church who emailed, and they were upset because the sign had been disapproved, and given the reason that, for something of the city not to look like Vegas, so I know there's a lot of signs coming about, but I would urge us to tackle the issue of the digital sign, digital signs as it relates to our ordinance, which I think you all probably would agree with at some point, and I'm gonna vote no, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Harris, the one for the other one for St. Sabina, I think that's fake news, I mean, that-
That's what I'm-
That's fake news, if I, I mean, I, since I've been on, I know we've never, and Mr. Shuldorff, you're the senior member of this, have there ever been coming up, or St. Sabinas ever came in front of us for a sign, digital sign?
I can't recall that, and it would have been in the planning zoning, even if they were denied, and I'm sure that's pretty easy to check.
So, yeah, and the sign was, yes, the low bidder was, is it Pyros, Pyros? Pyros Signs, that was the low bidder, I do know that for a fact, and, but like you said, the St. Sabina one never came, but P&amp;Z denied them, then they would still have to come in front of us, but I, I don't remember that.
I do have something else, but I'll wait my turn.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, you guys, we've been talking about this for several years now, this is just not all of a sudden popped up, I know Andrew's new to our council, and he wasn't here during the discussions, but we've been looking into this for some time, you know, if you stop and take a look around our city, you'll see some of our other public bodies that are also making this move as far as getting information out, not just safety, like Robert and you guys brought up just now, but information to the public. Our fire department just happened to build one not too long ago, because they thought it was a good idea, because it's reaching out to the public. We have the Knights of Columbus, they decided to do it because they deal with the public a lot, which a lot of us attend their events, you guys, they're wanting to reach out to the public, put a sign out there, so they're jumping on board with this. I just ran into a thing yesterday, that we're having one of our new businesses come in and gonna invest over $200,000 in a sign in this city, so evidently, this city has did their homework in seeing that these signs work, they would not go and invest $200,000, you guys, in a sign for no reason, or to put little sparkly things up for people to drive by, these are communication tools, and we need to step up to the plate and make a move on this. You go by James Egan Center, that thing is so old, it's like dirt, you guys, we need to step up to the plate, we need information to the public, not just on safety, that there's council meetings, that there's budget meetings, that there's a lot of different things in this city that's available to people. Since we've used those streets signs, what they're not used for, you guys, is our Wednesday night outs, they drag people out, this will open the doors, communication is a big thing, you guys, we need to take advantage of this, and I am supporting this wholeheartedly, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Shuldorff?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Harris, my first question to you would be, last week, two weeks, excuse me, two weeks ago, you asked if we reached out to St. Louis County, now, if we did, and they would, they would give us some funding, would you be for this? Okay, I'll just make up a number, five grand, if they gave us $5,000 for this sign, would you be for it then? I think that's a fair question, you brought it up two weeks ago. I'd also like to make the point out to you, Mr. Harris, St. Louis County Council reduced the 2018 budget submitted by the county executive by $31 million, included in that was a $6 million cut in the Department of Transportation, and $3 million in the Federal Aid Urban Trust Fund for streets and roads, so I seriously doubt they would have given us any money, as you suggested St. Charles County did, for that municipality. Mrs. Pagano and I have been working with St. Louis County to try to get our streets fixed, and I think that would be a priority as to giving a municipality money when they've already cut their own budget for street repair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shuldorff. Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Shuldorff, I appreciate the information that you brought, I know you have that association with St. Louis County, I just feel like we should, should explore that option, even if, you know, we get 5,000, even if we get 1,000, even if we get nothing, I think we just need to do our due diligence in making that application, so I do agree with that point with Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. Clerk, please poll the council for final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Okay, Bill 90, 9404 passes and becomes ordinance 8433. Next item on the agenda is Bill 9406. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to allow the change in the color of painted brick for the property at, for Auto Body Repair of America Abra located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
Councilman Egan moves for a third, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to allow for the change in the color of painted brick for the property located or for the, for the Auto Body Repair of America located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
Before the final votes taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk? Got me on your little, little bit fast.
Hi, I'm with Bill Yount Signs. I'm rep, here to represent my customer, auto, auto body parts, and what they want to do is just change this red trim to gray, make it look prettier, nicer.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for a final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Bill number 9406 becomes ordinance 8434. Next item on is new business, board appointments. Mr. Shuldoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reappoint Paul Smith, 1110 St. Bernadette, to the Citizens Participation Committee.
Second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Next item on the bid is requests. Councilman Sayam moves to approve a permit to keep four hands for Rachel Scholl located at 1625 Fairmount Drive. Second by Mr. Hinky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Permit is approved. Next item is bills for the first reading. The first bill is Bill 9408. That, that has to do with the, um, Grace and Mercy Adult Program, but we continued the public hearing to our next council meeting, so we will, we will skip this bill. Next one is Bill 9409.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $5,000 from account number 0150626000 Golf Course Utilities to account number 0150630000 Golf Course Equipment Repairs for the, for the various, for various equipment repairs to maintain current equipment.
Move for a second. Councilman Shuldoff moves for a second, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $5,000 from account number 0150626000 Golf Course Utilities to account number 0150630000 Golf Course Equipment Repairs for various equipment repairs to maintain current equipment.
Move for a third.
Second.
Councilman Shuldoff moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Roll call vote, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
Oh, it was next.
Okay. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this?
Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive. You guys are moving money to the equipment repairs for the, for, um, for the golf, uh, department. Originally, that, uh, equipment repair was allocated 30,000 in the budget. Is that correct? Okay. As of June 30th, it had 1,300 left. There's no financial reports for July, uh, in, on you guys' website. So, my question is, with them going through 30 grand already, will they need more money than 5,000? And if they will, will have to come back and do this again? So why is it that they, you know, don't have this published for people to see how much money is actually left in this budget, so that you kind of know how much more they may need?
It'd be hard to determine how much if something else breaks down. I know they, you get a general estimate of your repairs from just previous years on, on your equipment, but this is something where...
I guess part of what I'm trying to say is...
We gotta repair it and that's the thing, it's hard to, it's hard to decipher on how much money you need on repairs when some of the equipment that we have, Robert, should have been taken care of in the past and it hasn't, but now we have a new group in there and that's why we're, we are repairing this and that's why we need a little bit more money to repair it.
I get that.
To keep it for a longer period.
My general problem is there's no financial disclosure that's telling us where the money, how much money is left on, in anything and it's behind. That's part of my issue with transferring money to...
What you, what you have on your receipts are the same thing that we would have received.
And I wouldn't be transferring a dime until I found out what is the actual balance there.
We received July's.
Yeah, you got July's today.
We haven't. The public hasn't.
It'll go on.
It will be online, I'm sure.
Okay, but it's not there today and you're asking for money today to transfer. That's what I'm saying. We as the public would like to know how much money is left in, in the coffers, period.
Mm-hmm.
And would like to see the reports. And I would think that you guys would like to see the reports too before you transfer money all around.
Did you say, Mayor, tomorrow? That would be out online?
Yes, and you have it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, Mr. Egan?
Thank you. To answer your question, Mr. Smith, the city hired a new finance director and they've been catching up to speed. They were behind on their monthly expenditure list that we get. Over the weekend, we've got to where we were caught up through June and then tonight we got July. I have not looked at July. I'll look at that tomorrow, I hope, or Thursday. But we had a new group in there. We had substantial turnover in the finance department. We lost a substantial amount of people who, who retired and so we gotta give them the fair amount of time to catch up. But I appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Harris?
Yes, thank you. Uh, do we know what type of equipment we're repairing for the golf course?
Mayor? Mostly grass cutting equipment.
Okay, will, will those repairs, uh, just hold off the equipment from needing to be purchased as new or does this pretty much fix it then for a few years? Like, that it's aging?
It'll probably get us through this budget and then we'll have a new appropriation for the next year's budget.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Clerk, please poll the council for a final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Bill 9409 passes and becomes ordinance 8435.
Thank you.
Next item is Bill 9410.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $12,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 4110 Salaries and $6,000 to account number 4113 Benefits to provide for a full-time custodian position for the new court building and police annex.
I make a motion for a second reading, second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $12,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 4110 Salaries and $6,000 to account number 4113 Benefits to pr, provide for a full-time custodian position for the new court building and police annex.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Egan. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $12,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 4110 Salaries and $6,000 to account number 4113 Benefits to provide for a full-time custodian position for the new court building and police annex.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to
Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive. Um, there was a workshop in, uh, April, um, I believe April, and that was a discussion about a custodian for the new justice system, uh, Justice Center, I'm sorry. And the discussion was that there would not be, there would, uh, there was no need for a full-time, uh, custodian until fiscal year 19.
Once we, Robert, once we, um, the building was completely finished and the way everything was set up, because there were several different types that we had to change the plans for the way stuff was configured in there, and once everything was finished in there and we all, we went through there, they had that open house in there, and that's when that was brought up. I suggested that we get a full-time custodian in that building. That building is bigger than what I've ever thought it would be. You know, just by sitting there, seeing everything finished and when it was just an open building, now it's, it, I believe we need a full, a full-time custodian there.
All right. But, no, that's, that's all I wanted to say was, I know there was a discussion about that. Now, that money is coming from, so the court budget will have it in there for next year. Is that correct?
Excuse me?
The court budget will have a full-time custodian for next year, correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be split between the court and the police. We have, uh, full-time police personnel there, there's an annex now, so...
Could you repeat that?
Court personnel and, and police personnel both, so we'll probably have some from each one.
It will be in the budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Bill number 9410 becomes ordinance 8436. Next item on the agenda was council announcements. Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually just wanted to remind my, uh, my residents in Ward 9 that we will be having a Neighborhood Watch information meeting tomorrow evening, uh, 7:00 PM in the Arts and Crafts Room of the, um, the basement of the Egan Center. Uh, so the invitations were sent out in the mail recently. They were a little later than they expected, but they did, uh, make it, so I hope everyone will be there. Uh, I will be hosting the meeting and Officer Michael will be there and, uh, you know, uh, we'll just go from there. I hope to see everybody there and come out and help make your neighborhood safer. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Ms. Sayam. Mr. Jones?
Yes, there's a few streets getting worked on in Ward 2. You guys, I'm sure you've seen it by now. Uh, I will get on the contractor again and the city about not going out and, uh, notifying them on doors 24 hours in advance that there's going to be construction on those streets. I know the city is a little lax on that and they relaxed on it again because I got a bunch of phone calls. So I will be looking into that, but please have patience on those streets. Please be careful, you guys. Uh, we don't want to tear up no cars, we don't want to hurt no construction workers, and we don't want to hurt yourselves. So please be patient around that construction. Uh, also, you guys, please don't forget team our food pantry down the street. There's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. Uh, they're always looking for volunteers down there, they're always taking any amounts of money, change, couple bucks here, 20, 40, anything. Uh, and like I said, if you guys got time, shoot down to order a couple canned goods. Every little bit helps. Uh, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. September 28th, Friday, is the Florissant Police Officers Association, their Ben Adelant Golf Tournament. If you need to get a foursome in there, call, uh, Randy Bowden. He's in charge of it. If you got a, a business and you want to throw some swag their way or get a, a sign, a sponsor sign, get ahold of Randy Bowden. And, um, school starts in a couple days. When you get out in the morning, let's drive slow. Make sure there's gonna be lots of kiddies. I think Hayeswood starts on, uh, tomorrow? Okay, yeah, so I know, uh, some of the other ones start later in the week. Make sure that you're cognizant in the morning and in the evening of the, of the kiddos walking home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to thank those residents and Neighborhood Watch members who showed up for the combined Ward 1 and Ward 4 Cleanup Day this past Saturday. Uh, we did have a great group and enjoyed doing that together along with, uh, several police, Florissant Police Officers, and thank you to the, uh, Watch Captains also for putting it together. Robert Smith, uh, great job, and Jane Bowler. Uh, please join the Neighborhood Watch. You can Google Florissant Neighborhood Watch and the first result will be the online signup form. Businesses can also join. successful school year.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Shuldoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everyone that voted last week for voting. Very important day. Starbucks on Graham Road is open to the happiness of all you coffee drinkers. It looks great. The rehab inside and outside is complete and we're very happy about that. The construction on the Siteman Cancer Center is progressing. Please be aware on Graham Road. I would like to thank the contractor because they are cleaning the area where the trucks are entering and leaving the property. So I take my, tip my hat to the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldoff. Yes, as, as I say every council meeting, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you lock your firearm up. Do not leave them in your vehicle. Keep your firearms secured. If you're going to own them, be a responsible one. If you, if you don't lock them up, be responsible. You shouldn't, you shouldn't own a firearm. Also, I'd like to thank Ward Four, Neighborhood Watch. We had a successful trash pickup with, with Ward One also. So that was a very successful event we had Saturday. Thank you to everybody that showed up. And also, this week is National Chip Day for your pets. So if you, if you have a pet and you don't have them microchipped, make sure you go get them microchipped. They get out and they run rampant. The city gets them, they run the, they'll run their chip. They know exactly where the, where that dog has came from. So it's, it's a good thing. All my dogs have them. So it's, it's a, they have their chips. And it's a good thing to know so you can keep track of your dogs, especially if they do get out. Neighborhood Watch, again, make sure if you, if you're interested in joining Neighborhood Watch, make sure you join. Get ahold of Florissant, Florissant Police Officer Steve Michaels. So that's all I have. Thank you. Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get to the city stuff, I'd like to thank John Hassel and the hundreds of volunteers and Ballerie Country Club for hosting the best PGA Championship ever, in my opinion. And I'd like to thank Mr. Woods for bringing his A-game, because when he brings his A-game, golf business goes up and we happen to own a golf course and I think it's going to be good for business. It's tremendous for St. Louis. Really looked good. I'd like to thank Senator Gina Walsh and our county council member Rochelle Walton-Grey for joining us, for the dedication of our new court building and police annex. And it was very well attended. I thank all the citizens that attended. I think every council member was here. Dr. Rance Thomas was here to help us and also Father Ulrich. I just really appreciate everyone that helped make our dedication a success. Mr. Gerald's. And then the following day, July thirty-first, was a big day and I think one of the reasons Starbucks did the renovation is because in anticipation of the Sitemans Cancer Center. It's a twenty-six million dollar investment in, in our city by Christian Hospital and BJC and we're just, Barnes Jewish. We're just very, very pleased that they're locating that at this Christian Northwest campus. We put out a news release. It's a lot of details. It's a two-page news release on all the great services that'll be offered by this cancer center. And as a side benefit, I believe it's also going to be a very, it's going to be an economic stimulus for the surrounding area of that intersection. This Friday, we're going to have another food truck night at the Knights Grounds, seventeenth. That'll start at five o'clock and it'll go till about nine PM. And so join us down at the Knights Grounds. They'll soon have some digital signs that advertise those events. We got the concert this weekend is the Retro Band and that's Saturday at the lake, St. Ferdinand Lake at seven PM. And that'll be followed by Fanfare and Kitty Moller the following weekend. And like I said earlier in the meeting, we're going to dedicate a, a plaque to honor the late Robert Lowry in September. But on August twenty-ninth, we're going to have a plaque to honor Lowell Jardier. He was the one that donated and moved the building that they used for the headquarters for Old Town Partners and the Valley of Flowers. That was very generous and he was also involved in Rotary very much and was involved in many projects to benefit the Florissant community. And we, we're going to dedicate a plaque to Lowell for his contribution to our success. In that same night, we're going to have Dancing in the Street. It's going to be Dancing in the Street, totally awesome. It's, it's going to be right by Stems Florist is one of the sponsors and also sponsored by Bunkers. And I think there's several other sponsors. Anybody know the other sponsors on that one? I think the State Farm Insurance Company and I think KB Electric is also a sponsor of that event. Yeah, KB's also. Here they are, okay. Stems Florist, Bunkers Tavern, KB Electric, That Ninety Shop, State Farm Insurance, and Old Town Partners.
There you go.
Couldn't find it.
You got it now, Mayor.
All right. And we got the Doggy Pool Party at Bangor. That's Friday, September seventh, and Saturday, September eighth. Friday, six-thirty to eight-thirty and Saturday's ten to twelve. That's, that's a lot of fun if you've never seen it. And then we're going to have the Senior Town Hall Meeting, September thirteenth. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, one final note. September second is one of our concerts being rescheduled because it was rained out. The first, our first concert of the season was Rockin' Chair and it was rained out, so we, we moved it to September second, which is on a Sunday night. And it's Labor Day weekend, so if you're not doing nothing Labor Day weekend, come out Sunday night and listen to Rockin' Chair. Very good band. It's at St. Ferdinand Park. Next regular meeting for the City Council will be on Monday, August twenty-seven, twenty eighteen. Ms. Pagano moves to adjourn the regular meeting, second by Mr. Shuldoff. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it. Meeting adjourned.